Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Southfield Regular Meeting being held on Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilwoman Cruz. Councilwoman Frazier. Councilwoman Hoskins.
Here.
Councilwoman Mandelbaum.
Present.
And Council President Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Now we have our communications. The City of Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Thank you for your attention. Our first person to speak under communication is Mr. Greg Keeler.
Good evening, Councilman Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. Um, I had a question on this new money from nonprofits. And I like to think Mr. Mandelbaum was a lot of his questions that he asked on that topic. I would like to know if I donated $10,000 to a company, how much of that $10,000 would make for two companies and how much would be referred to the city? Because I would have in mind as I'm giving my donation that 100% of my money is going towards that foundation. And then the other thing is with marketing, I have done work for them through my business. Now, because I gave them a charitable donation of my work, who gets that? Because I gave them over about $30,000 worth of work. Is that taxed some kind of way because I did in kindness words if I give them a gift? Is, how is that going to be taxed? How is all these little things going to be taxed or figured out if you're going to start breaking the system? And I think it needs to be laid out, so I know. And then do I get 100% of my money that I donated because it's no longer going 100% to that organization? And I know when I go to other events, they break down, you know, this is for this and this is for that. So would this also be broken down as to who's giving what and whatever? And I know if I'm donating or looking at one with parents that have premature kids, I don't want any of that money going to the city. I want that money going to those parents that are in trouble, that are having kids faster than what they expect and that their money situation might not be able to handle the unexpected, premature kid coming around and trying to make their lives a little bit better and easier. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other requests to speak tonight. There's a hand in the back. I'm sorry, we normally have a sign-up sheet here, but since you're here, go right ahead.
My apologies, I've been out campaigning all day, so, and then as soon as I leave here, I have another council meeting I got to go to. Good evening, my name is Karen Moragian. Can you hear me okay?
No, I cannot.
You can just lower the mic.
This doesn't count against my time, does it?
Okay, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
No. Could you speak louder?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I have to be right on top of this. My name is Karen Moragian, and thank you for allowing me to speak on such short notice. I did send an email recently to the mayor and all council members. I understand on the ballot next week, you're asking the voters to decide whether they want to have what is considered a humane kill of the deer. I'm really disappointed to see this. Has anyone considered contacting the United States Humane Society or attorneys for animals or Michigan, or, well, now it's Michigan Humane? There are so many non-lethal measures that can be taken because it's really a divided issue. You have people who absolutely love wildlife, and I can guarantee you, they're going to be infuriated if the deer are killed, especially if deer are shot, whether it's with, you know, bow and arrow, a rifle, shotgun, you know, deer don't always die instantly. Nobody can guarantee a clean shot. And the last thing you want is for dying and dead deer to end up on somebody's property. Then you're going to incur the wrath of very angry residents. I also wonder, did the city attorney do the research on this in regards to the liability that, you know, can be imposed upon the city of Southfield? There are simple measures that can be taken. The first thing is, is that it needs to be strictly enforced that there is no more feeding of deer and wildlife. Yes, I understand people love to do that, but the problem is, is it imprint them and that creates a huge problem. Vegetation alongside the roadside, that all needs to be cleaned up. I understand people may be upset that the deer are eating the landscaping. It's a simple call or visit to, you know, a nursery to consult with the employees and the managers about what is deer resistant in regards to bushes and shrubs. You know, the property needs to be cleaned up. You, you know, if you're going to have a garden, you have to net it, you know, and you can't do a separate garden for wildlife because it's going to attract them. Oakland County has 1.3 million residents. The city of Southfield has under 80,000. The DNR last year said there's approximately 400,000 deer. And rest assured, the 400,000 deer are not in Oakland County and they're not in Southfield, and I seriously doubt there's 80,000 deer that are in Southfield. We need to learn how to live in coexistence with the wildlife.
Okay, you have three minutes and your time is up, but thank you for your comments. But normally, we just listen to comments, but because this is on our ballot and it is very important, just so you know, we have a whole wildlife commission that took this very seriously. They studied this, also had town halls, talked to our residents several months. That's why they decided to put it on the ballot, to hear from the residents, to have our residents decide which way they would like to best handle our deer. So we didn't take this lightly, and we do appreciate your comments, and we do have a whole wildlife commission that studies all of the animal wildlife in the city of Southfield.
And if you could please, you know, still reach out to the United States Humane Society and Attorneys for Animals, they'll be more than happy to give you guidance. I just want to make sure that when people go to vote next week, they are aware of all the non-lethal measures that are out there, especially sterilization, because that works far more effectively than killing the deer. We can't just shoot and kill our way out of what we consider a problem.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
I appreciate you allowing me to speak at so short notice and for being late, so thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I was going to address this under the mayor's portion. There is no deer cull scheduled for the city of Southfield.
Right.
This measure on the ballot is strictly to measure community feeling because we hear everything. And we also know that too many deer are not good for the deer. We also know that too many deer are doing, putting our nature areas out of balance, especially for birds and bees and other pollinators. So even if the overwhelming number of people in Southfield support the cull, that does not mean that the city is going to perform one. Personally, I don't think it makes a lot of sense for Southfield to cull deer. And by the way, the other thing I've heard about the word "cull," nowhere in the definition of "cull" is eliminate. Cull is a matter of selecting and reducing or thinning. But even if the majority of people that vote next week vote to support a cull, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. And again, personally, I feel that there's no sense in Southfield doing a cull if there isn't one in our neighboring communities. Deer do not know or respect municipal boundaries.
Correct.
So, yeah, I was going to bring this up because there's been quite a bit in the newspaper, including Sunday's very thorough article about the problem. It's not just the Southfield problem, it's a problem across Michigan. And one of the reasons is according to the Free Press, there are fewer hunters. There was also an ad in the Southfield Sun last week that makes it sound as if the cull is on and that, that's simply not true. So I'm happy to bring that up. As I said, I was going to bring it up later, but since the speaker is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell.
Yeah, I just want to briefly respond to Mr. Keeler since I brought up the payment of taxes last week. And just, this study will take approximately six to nine months, and the study will be, once we implement it, it'll be totally voluntary. But let me address one issue. This process in no way will affect the federal tax code of the United States. The IRS governance of nonprofits will continue, and that will continue to be, you know, what the IRS said is. In no way in the world can the city of Southfield impact the tax codes. So, but I will, I won't address issues that they come up from this podium, but I will talk to individuals offline as this study is being completed. It will be completed in six to nine months, and it's simply a voluntary revenue source. There are some, some very large cities in the United States that has generated, excuse me, X amount of dollars on a voluntary basis, and obviously, it comes from the leadership of the nonprofits. And the leadership of that nonprofit will appeal to their community mindedness and their support of the community that they are in. And in no way will it impacts individuals' taxes or their corporation taxes. So, but if, I'm going for a basis between now and six to nine months, I will try to answer questions individually and not from this particular podium on this issue because I understand there are some things that, that might be confusing and/or just need to be explained. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our presentations. Presentation of Proclamation, the Extra Mile Day.
Good evening, council. Today, November 1st, is National Go the Extra Mile Day, and I'd like to invite Father Chris Yaw to the podium. Every year, in the city of Southfield, we've joined hundreds of communities across the country in noting Extra Mile Day and honoring individuals who clearly have gone the extra mile for the community. So I'd like to read the following proclamation, November 1st, 2022, honoring Father Chris Yaw on Extra Mile Day. Whereas, Southfield, Michigan, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas, Southfield encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contributions by giving of themselves and supporting the efforts of the community, of community activities such as neighborhood associations, the Big Break, Friends of Southfield Public Arts, the annual Martin Luther King Task Force Peace Walk, the Southfield Goodfellows, and on and on, and/or by sponsoring or serving in outreach programs to address the needs in the community. And whereas, Southfield through various efforts to support the community chooses to shine light on individuals that give of themselves with total effort to go the extra mile and make a difference, to bring about change and improve the quality of life in the Southfield community at large. Whereas, Southfield salutes the 2022 Extra Mile Honoree, Father Chris Yaw, the rector of St. David's Episcopal Church. Father Yaw, who has served St. David's Parish since 2007, has initiated numerous outreach opportunities and resource programs such as Remember Them, memorializing the lives lost to excessive force or vigilantism, a fundraiser raising over $300,000 for the South Oakland Shelter after numerous years, a Haiti outreach ministry, and an anti-gun violence program as well as partnering with the city of Southfield and the Southfield Police Department in Oakland County on a recent gun buyback program, tutoring for students, and as well as a Penn Pal Program Exchange with students at Vanderburg Elementary School, a food pantry, a community garden, alcoholic anonymous chapter, and more. Father Yaw is also a member of the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. So whereas, Southfield acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America cause to create 500 extra mile cities across the country and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day once again on November 1st. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Councilman Cypher, Mayor of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2022, as Extra Mile Day in the city of Southfield, and is proud to recognize Father Chris Yaw for his ongoing extra mile activities through the personal contributions and for many years of dedicated commitment and service. I urge all residents in the community and community partners of Southfield to take the time on this day and not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also acknowledge those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, family, community, country, and world a better place. And council, I present Father Chris Yaw.
Hi.
Well, thank you so much. You're very brave to give a preacher a microphone. But I'm very honored. I see a lot of familiar faces here after, as I've been here in Southfield for 15 years and very proud to be part of the faith community, the interfaith community. As you could tell from what the mayor read, I obviously did all those things by myself, but of course, had the shoulders of many, many people on which to stand. As a Christian and as a representative of a Christian community here in Southfield, one of the most, one of the foremost quotes that, that Jesus gives us is that the greatest among you is your servant. And I like to think that the members of St. David's take that very seriously, that if we're not giving back to our city at least the amount that we owe you in taxes, then we're probably not doing our job. Then unless we're feeding so many people, unless we're raising so much money, what good are we? So I'm very humbled by this award, very surprised, and really, it's for this community of St. David's that is devoted to worship, outreach, and love for all that I accept this award. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do. Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do for the community and for the city of Southfield. Thank you, Mayor. Council, that brings us to our consent agenda. The first item is the Council 2023 meeting schedule. We all had an opportunity to review that. Any comments, questions?
Madam Chair, I would like to perhaps pull that for a little more discussion. It is under consent.
Okay. So you want to pull item A?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda, item B, is the Oakland Community Interlocal Agreement for a Designated Assessor under PA 660 of 2018. And item C is the Application for Charitable Gaming License for Greater Realtors Foundation. Item A has been asked to be pulled. Are there any other items that we want to pull for further discussion? None? Okay, council, may we entertain a motion for consent agenda items B and C?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item B and C on the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoskins, to approve consent agenda items B and C. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Item A for discussion.
At the last meeting, I addressed the fact that we have those budget meetings in May, those special meetings, and I thought there would be consideration made to ensure that council got involved in the budget process earlier in the year, even the prior year, being December of this year or earlier sometime, because when May rolls around, we are, it's kind of after the fact, and we can obviously impact changes at that point in time, but it just seems that we are, we are getting a little, we should be involved in our earliest stage of the budget process to impact the allocation of money.
Okay. Administrator Zorn?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilwoman Brightwell and I did have a conversation on the weekend. We're happy to accommodate a date. As I indicated during our last session, there was some discussion about some type of goal-setting retreat. And as we wrapped up the, at the onset of the COVID pandemic, we were planning a retreat. That did not happen, and it's been unfortunate, it's been a number of years, and the administration would welcome something in mid-December or even early January. I would like to also point out, I would, if there was any, we typically do our fund balance allocation of excess fund balance at June 30th, of those funds that were remaining as of June 30th. If we were to do something before December 18th, that session could impact the decisions we make at that meeting as well. So if it's something the second week of December, as we were setting this schedule together, as we were putting this schedule together, we had originally, we were looking at a meeting on Monday, the 11th, and we pushed it back to the 18th simply because it would have been 28 days. If there was something, you know, a Thursday afternoon or something where we could do some planning and that on budgeting priorities, I will remind council that reality is most of our budget is defined by our collective bargaining agreements, and if staffing levels are to remain the same, it's pretty status quo. But we still do have money items regarding our recovery dollars and preliminary numbers at June 30th with the funds that came in from the state and other agencies. There's going to be some larger amounts that need to be allocated as part of our, the adoption of our annual budget. So I would love to see a date mid-December.
So for this calendar, you want to see a date in December for next year?
This year. If we, if we could do December this year to impact the budget for, you know, the next fiscal year budget.
Okay. But I hear what you're saying. That's something we would have to decide now for this year.
Right.
But this calendar that we're looking at is for next year, so I'm asking, do you want December and next year to, to have a study session in it?
Yes.
So that, for 2024's budget?
Yes.
So because, so do, you're saying we might not need the ones in May. Would you prefer to, you want to see something this year in December, which we can take care of? But do you want to see it any other time during the month, I mean, during the year so that we can get the 2023 calendar?
Yes, if we can, for this fiscal year, obviously, for the fiscal year 2024, we can, we can take care of that. But for this fiscal year, I would like to see council input earlier than this May of this year. So that means that we can do something in December, squeeze something into January, or what is, whatever is more appropriate at this point in time.
If I may, Madam President, so my staff, we start preparing our budgets in December. The administration starts meeting with individual departments in January. For example, the payroll information's put together in December. January and February, staff puts, starts putting its budgets together. The administration by charter has to deliver a budget to the mayor's office by April 1st, and then the mayor's office has to deliver his budget to city council by the first regular meeting in May. If there were something that happened this December for the '23-'24 budget, that, those goals help drive a lot of decisions we're going, we need to make. You know, and there are other pieces, and I'll use, for example, roads. We have commitments on, you know, roads that we're engineering now for next year's budgets.
Okay. So. Councilwoman Mandelbaum, you had a comment?
So I, so I hear what Councilwoman Brightwell is saying, and my question is, if we're going to do, you know, it sounds like even December would be a little bit too early to, to look at the budget, right?
Yeah, are we talking, if we're talking for the budget year, we'll be adopting June 1, July 1 of '23?
I'm looking at next year. So for '24, for '23-'24.
Right.
So, I'm sorry, '24-'25.
Twenty-five.
Right. So we have these meetings, December 4th, December 18th, at the end of next year, that we could potentially use, have a shorter agenda and have a topic of, of budget, or one of the first meetings in January to just have a topic under the council portion or under administration of budget rather than a specific meeting, because we do have, if we end up doing, going back to our retreats and our goal-setting, as, as Mr. Zorn said, a lot of that draws... as Mr. Zorn said, a lot of that drives some of the extra wish lists that council members have. So if, if, I think in December, we usually have a lighter budget, a lighter meeting anyway. I think we can just add one of those topics in December or January.
Would that suffice for you, Mr. Brightwell?
Well, I'm trying to, it sounds right. But what I'm, what I want to impact this year's budget discussion, which will happen in May. I want to impact that before it happens in May. And if we can, are you saying that we can be impactful by having a meeting in December that is a standalone retreat or session with council only in your departments?
December or early January would be the preferred months.
Okay.
By mid-January, we're probably halfway through our budgets. And I'll just remind counsel and the public, this is why we do a five-year CIP. This is why we have a master plan in Parks and Rec. It's why we do an asset management plan with our roads. It's, you know, these things are all setting those planning stages. And again, I'll go back to road funding. Those funds we're working at securing now, there was a recent question about are we getting federal aid? My first response to that question would be, one, the city doesn't receive federal aid directly to our roads. That money goes to the state, then to the county. So we're now jockeying and positioning ourselves for road funding three and four years from now. And that's how that money queues up. The three projects you're doing this year, Berg, Northwestern Highway, Bell to Telegraph, and the third one I'm forgetting, I apologize. All of those projects, we secured money, funding for three years ago. So again, that's what that planning is about. But obviously, for council to give the administration goals, that drives what we do, and it makes our task much easier. I welcome that.
Counselwoman Banks?
We already have meetings on this proposed schedule, scheduled for Monday, January 9th. Can we just allocate that meeting for discussion?
That, that would be fine. But again, I'm forgetting when our last meeting in December is mid. I just, the administration gets nervous when I have more than three weeks between meetings or things that come up. And then we end up getting jammed up with, you know, 15, 16 council items.
Madam Chair, I was, along with Ms. Banks thinking, I was thinking of setting aside time at the second meeting in January. You know, a lot of the city staff, of course, is off for the holidays. This would give the administration more time in mid-month. And yet it would meet the desire of Councilman Brightwell to have early input. And I think really what it is, it's about priorities. There, you know, we all, you know, we all recognize that the majority of the budget is tied to people. But what are our priorities with the other funds? So I would suggest that second meeting, keep it light, lighter for action items, and then have time for budget discussion.
Okay. I think that would be good. What is your?
Yeah, that sounds good. But I'm conscious of the fact, it sounds good, obviously. It gets done what needs to be done. But I want to make sure Mr. Zorn has enough time to, because I don't want to get at that meeting and there's something lacking. I want this to be a full-bodied meeting, a full-throated meeting. And if you can't, if you can't, if you're jammed up, you can't get things done in preparation for that meeting. So are you good for that second meeting?
If we're wrapped up by the, if I have council priorities by January, end of January, we can make that work. That gives us February, March to make that work.
Okay, well, that's fine.
But then along those same lines, then, on this new calendar, shouldn't we also make the second meeting in January, the budget discussion? For that?
Yes.
Okay.
My only concern with saying specifically for budget discussion, I mean, I guess at any time we can always add other things if they come up and as needed.
Of course.
I just don't want to.
Oh, no, not just, but we will include.
Include, correct, okay.
It's part, like we are going to do this time. We'll have whatever our meeting items are first, and then allocate time to discuss them.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And if I may, Madam President, we still have the issue in December of '22 on those fund balance allocations. I will want some input regarding priorities from council. And we do our best, we're constantly taking a pulse of where we think council's at, you know. I know neighborhood streets are a priority. I'm hearing these fences along some of the mile roads, a tree program, street lighting. The cap, not the operational expense of the street lighting, but the, some of our decorative street lighting that needs to be replaced. I'm hearing some possible upgrades to replacing lights fixtures that are, I think, 30-plus years old now.
We could call a special meeting in December.
Yep.
Because our last one is, we have only two, the 5th and the 12th.
And then typically, these types of things, I would run through two filters, my council leadership and my finance committee. At the same time, I'm hearing the input from my, my neighborhood services and the other council committees, trying to get a consensus as to where these dollars should be allocated as, you know, on, as some type of reserve fund balance for a group of activities, is what I'm thinking.
I just say that if we're going to do it, we should get the information out as soon as possible because people do make holiday plans, vacation plans, and that sort of stuff. And we want as much input as possible, so in as many people in attendance as possible. So we should set a date and then make that public knowledge so that everybody can attend.
Right. And Mr. Zorn made a, he made a very good point. And it's that fund allocation meeting. And that's, and we got so many things going on. And the need assessment, we got the pool, we got a lot of things that we will have to allocate funds through. So just as soon as we can, in December, as long as this is full-throated and you guys are ready to go. I mean, the staff is ready to go because we don't want councils to show up and, you know, nothing.
And I'll remind counsel, for example, you create, we have a targeted goal for fund balance. We have achieved that goal. So as these dollars are available, facilities are an issue, roads, pool, how we prioritize those funds. I mean, in a lot of, in past years, in my 14-years-year, those decisions were being made at the last minute, and money was being put in different things without, it happened so quickly for council that I'd like to close that gap where council has more input on that.
Counselwoman Banks?
So, I mean, I'm just curious. December 15th or the 20th, would those days, like, even work? I mean, should we just schedule a date in December? Sure.
This year or next year?
This year. Will the 20th work this year? It's a Tuesday. I'm assuming December 19th is out. It's a holiday.
Madam President, when's our last meeting in December? I haven't been able to pull it up quick enough.
The 12th, December 12th, which is a Monday, the second Monday. The 15th is that Thursday.
My only concern with the, for example, the 20th, is we're positioning ourselves that the annual financial report will be transmitted to the state much earlier than it has been in the past. And we like to have that be an official action of council where those fund balances are placed. So if, after that meeting, if that could be the final outcome, here's the adoption of these fund balances. So that can be put into our annual financial report. And it's not just finishing it, it's getting it through the standards reviews from our auditors.
So what date would you be looking at?
If I could get it before the 14th. And again, I feel like in my career here, we're constantly making that one decision without the input of council. And now that we've hit these other targeted goals, you know, my, one would be put it in the facilities infrastructure reserve, put a block of money in. The administration could outline some recommendations in early December and at least begin to get some priorities from our perspective. But I'd like to have council's input on it. Seems we park that money each year and not always give council a lot of opportunity to comment.
What about December 1st?
Or 8th, 1st or the 8th?
The 1st or the 8th.
The 8th would work.
The 8th?
Yep.
Something for you?
Why can't we use one of the current meetings we have scheduled? Unless I'm missing something?
He said there's only two meetings in December.
Correct. And that's not, those meetings will not be, will not satisfy this need? Are there more, unless there's more items that I'm not aware of?
It could be, they don't know yet.
Correct.
We can always council a meeting. Go.
Okay.
The 1st. What, the 1st and/or the 8th?
The 1st or the 8th gives us time to incorporate council's desires in the allocation of those fund balances.
8th.
Let's go with the 8th. Anybody opposed to the 8th?
And I was going to say the 1st, only because if we, for some reason, need to come back, we have two more, we have another meeting, you know, if we need to come back. But either day's fine with me, I don't know. Do you think we can accomplish everything in one meeting?
I believe we could. Again, the agenda we work is from our planning documents, what we hear happening in our committees. And if I may ask what our top priorities are here, it's our neighborhood streets, our facilities, this rec, and particularly the pool. We're embarking on an exciting announcement tomorrow with Oakland County on basically a $3.5 million initial investment at Beechwood, moving towards a splash pad there. Now, those items need to go through the voting and prioritization of city council.
Okay, so temporarily, or we'll just say a special meeting on Thursday, December 8?
The administration will prepare a write-up for our next meeting, and we can adopt that for this year's calendar, then, special meeting?
Would it be a special meeting? Or would it be a regular meeting? Because we're, it's far enough out.
Regular?
Could be a regular meeting.
Regular meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, are you, with the changes suggested, you want to make this 2023? Do we need to go over what requests? Because I only see the one for December 22nd in 2023 that we wanted to add. But, I mean, it's nothing that you have to change. Because it's just going to be on the agenda, right? Okay, so.
Well, yeah, I make a motion that we adopt the meeting for December 8, 2022.
We're going to do a, we're going to bring that back next meeting for, under consent.
This is the calendar, Dan.
This is for the calendar for 2023. It was under the agenda item that you pulled. We're going to do that first.
Okay.
So on the calendar in front of you, then December 4th will be, we could put in parentheses, budget prioritization or goals or?
That sounds good.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We're ready to vote on the calendar for 2023, the council's schedule.
Okay. I move that we adopt the calendar for 2023 as amended.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the 2023 city council's schedule as discussed this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
We said as amended. What are we amending? I thought we're keeping the same.
The amendment on the calendar will indicate December 4th will be a budget prioritization meeting. So you have the 27th regular meeting. If you look at spacing on that, we can keep a good balance of activities. And that December 4th meeting of '23 will focus on budget priorities. And then the administration will bring back a request for a regular meeting focused on budget prioritizations for the next year's budget to be adopted July 1 for December 8th. And that will be on our next agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have agenda items for discussion and/or action. Item A, the authorization to repair the police firearms range walls and ceiling.
Approved.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Assistant Administrator. With me, I have Lieutenant Matthew Taylor and also Detective Dan Restem. They are the coordinators for this particular project. So yes, we are requesting authorization to repair our existing range. Just a quick reminder to council, this was the item that we brought before you for the 2022, 2023 budget cycle. We presented to you photos of the existing conditions of the range, where you were able to see the walls and ceiling in need of great repair. Also, the fact that there's areas in the range that have never had any type of protective ballistic material for a range. And so in addition to that, there's an area near the 10-foot or 15-yard line that has never had any type of protective wall barriers for ricochets. And so we are requesting permission to move forward this project. We have already ran this through the purchasing department, and it's a government bid that's already been approved through Target Action Network. As Councilwoman Banks always likes to ensure that we have the state that this particular company resides in, it is out of Pravo, Utah. The total amount for this will be $120,000. The account that it will come out is our police-supporting operating budget account. And again, these funds were pre-allocated during the planning for the 22, 22-year cycle.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions, comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval to authorize, for the authorization to repair the police firearms range walls and ceilings.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the authorization to repair the police firearms range walls and ceiling as presented tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have the authorization, the request to authorization to contract for rehabilitation of the Lockdale Pump Station.
Yes, what I have before the council first is their request to pay for the rehabilitation of the Lockdale Pump Station. This is a stormwater-only station that's located at the intersection of Lockdale and Northwestern Service Drive. This station has not had maintenance in approximately 25 years. It was found to be non-functioning, and considering the investment the city has made in redoing Lockdale Street and also the Northwestern Service Drive, we feel that it's necessary to get this station up and running. It had been bid out once before, and the bids unfortunately were not successful. This time, we were able to get a bid from Z Contractors of Shelby Township. The total bid amount, including a 15% contingency, is Z Contractors has done work for the city previously on bridges and have found to be competent. Therefore, we ask the city council for approval of the rehabilitation of this lift station.
Counsel, do we have any questions, or? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the authorization to contract for rehabilitation for the Lockdale Pump Station as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the authorization to contract for rehabilitation of the Lockdale Pump Station as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have the authorization to purchase V-Box salt spreaders for Streets and Highway Division.
Yes, these are the salt spreaders that go on the back of the large trucks when we salt. They are two V-Box spreaders, the electrical. They will replace two units that are over 15 years old. The cost for the total is $14,770. We were able to get the best price through the cooperative agreement with City of Rochester Hills. We would then ask the city for approval. They would be bought from Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell, Michigan, for a total, as I said, of $14,770.
Counsel, do we have any questions, comments? Seeing none?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that council does hereby authorize the motor pool division to purchase two electric V-Box salt spreaders from Truck and Trailer Specialties.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to authorize, to approve the authorization to purchase the V-Box salt spreaders for Streets and Highway Division as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Next, we have the authorization to purchase electric vehicles for the parking enforcement.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Therese Beeks, Director of Code Enforcement. And with me, I have Donovan Fann, Supervisor of Code Enforcement and Parking Enforcement. The Parking Enforcement Department currently utilizes four retired police vehicles in a rotation of three work shifts. Over the past 12 years, the motor pool department, I'm sorry, the motor pool department has graciously reassigned retired police cars to the Parking Enforcement Fleet. The retired vehicles are often aged past life expectancy and have driven over 100,000 miles. Exposed seat springs and framework, rusted-out floorboards, a broken odometer, and a broken gas gauge are a few examples of the dilapidation suffered by the fleet. Once we began to look into the cost of maintaining the free vehicles, we determined it is costly for the city to maintain, repair, and inspect the retired police vehicles. Furthermore, retired police vehicles are not ideal for the task of Parking Enforcement Patrol. The Ford Crown Victoria, the discontinued Ford Crown Victoria, is bulky in size and obstructs two vehicle parking spaces in one ticket stop. The vehicles have suffered a few fender benders from other motors backing into them as they exit parking spaces. The small and powerful Dodge Charger and discontinued Chevy Impala are ideal for police pursuits, but the speedy acceleration and front-wheel drive make it difficult for Parking Enforcement officers to maneuver in congested parking lots. Such issues also apply to other police vehicles, including the Ford Explorer and Chevy Tahoe. Retired police vehicles also burn fuel heavily due to Parking Enforcement's intermittent practice of stop, go, and idle during the ticketing process. Replacement vehicles were not requested in the department's budget for the current fiscal year because I was not fully cognizant of the vehicles, of the fleet's condition. The increase in concerns expressed by users of the vehicles in August prompted a test drive of the department's fleet. I, along with a member of administration, test drove the vehicles and determined an urgent need for replacements. As we considered cost-effective options, it was determined electric vehicles are the best choice for Parking Enforcement use. Based on a 10-year comparison of gas-powered police vehicles to electric vehicles, it was determined that electric vehicles would offer significant savings to the city. The cost to repair, maintain, and utilize the department's four gas-powered vehicles will exceed $316,000 over a 10-year span. In addition to occasional service repairs, the department's gas-powered fleet requires weekly inspections and maintenance. The weekly endeavor requires the combined efforts of one Code Enforcement staff member and DPW's motor pool. In 10 years, the repair parts and service labor of four gas-powered police vehicles will exceed $60,000 in cost to the motor pool. The cost of annual wages and benefits for the Code Enforcement staff member would exceed $105,000 in 10 years. Should Parking Enforcement continue to use gas-powered vehicles, the cost of fuel will exceed $151,000. The economic changeover from gas-powered vehicles to electric vehicles, namely the Chevy Bolt EUV, would save the city time and money. No oil change or fluid maintenance is required. There would be no need to maintain the engine or transmission because electric vehicles have neither. The vehicle's regenerative braking system lasts longer than a traditional braking system. The manufacturer's bumper-to-bumper limited warranty covers the vehicle for three years or 36,000 miles. The battery and electric components warranty covers the battery and electric components for eight years or 100,000 miles. The corrosion limited warranty covers rust for six years or 100,000 miles. Now, GM recommends that electric vehicles are checked for tire pressure, tire tread wear, and windshield washer fluid monthly. Tire rotation and inspection of core components and systems are to be performed every 7,500 miles. Replacement of wiper blades and air filters is routine. Such routine tasks can be performed by a motor pool. And the driver confidence package equips the vehicle with an automatic braking system, rear parking assistance, rear traffic alerts, a remote starter, and an HD rear vision camera. The interior protection package provides all-weather floor mats. In the span of 10 years, the cost to charge four vehicles is approximately $18,000, allowing for potential savings of $133,000 in fuel costs for the city. Based on a report written by Edmunds on the 2021 Chevy Bolt EV, the cost to repair and maintain one Bolt for the first five years is approximately $3,813. Fortunately, electric vehicles are covered by warranties that would allow the city's motor pool two to three years to become educated and acquainted with the repair and maintenance of electric vehicles for the future. Purchasing electric vehicles for Parking Enforcement would allow the city to sell retired police vehicles, such as the Tahoe, Charger, and Explorer, and acquire resale earnings. If the city were to sell one of each vehicle model at auction, there may be earnings of up to $24,500 annually. In the span of 10 years, approximate resale earnings may reach $245,000. Charging stations for both public and city use will be installed on the municipal campus. Currently, there are no DTE rebates available to purchase charging stations. However, there are grants available for the installation of stations once an electric vehicle is purchased. The city can apply for grants for six charging stations after the purchase of EVs. It takes approximately three to four months for electric vehicles to be manufactured and delivered, allowing time for the installation of the charging stations prior to the arrival of the new vehicles. In conclusion, Code Enforcement graciously requests an adjustment in the budget of $120,000 to purchase four new electric vehicles for Parking Enforcement. In the 10-year span, the cost to repair, maintain, and utilize the department's current four gas-powered vehicles will exceed $316,000. The 2023 Chevy Bolt would be the best choice for replacement. The cost to charge the vehicles over a 10-year span is approximately $18,000, allowing for potential savings of $133,000 in fuel costs. Again, based on Edmunds' calculations, the cost to repair and maintain one Chevy Bolt, and the cost to maintain one Chevy Bolt, it was determined that four Chevy Bolts would cost approximately $30,500 to maintain and repair over a 10-year span. Again, the Chevy Bolt is covered by warranties that would allow the city's motor pool to, two to three years, to become educated and acquainted with the repair and maintenance of electric vehicles. And although DTE no longer offers rebates, there are grants available for the installation of additional charging stations post-purchase of the electric vehicles. Other savings may be realized through the sale of retired police vehicles at auction, resulting in a return of 14% to 35% of the retired police vehicles' approximate MSRP. The sale of one of each vehicle model, the Tahoe, the Charger, and Explorer, at an annual auction may earn the city up to $245,000 in a 10-year span. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's great. Counsel? Councilman Brightwell?
Ms. Beeks, I want to thank you for that presentation. That sounds like a detailed cost analysis, financial analysis, something that I used to do when I was working. So, the question I asked you previously, and if you could just sort of explain it, you said that currently we have two charging stations. You want to purchase four EVs. And I know you indicated we can get grant post-purchase. So is there a timing mechanism where we would have to? You know, how do we charge all four vehicles to have them up and running every morning, and we only got two stations? How does that work?
Well, once we purchase the vehicles, we can immediately apply for the grants. I anticipate installing the charging stations prior to the delivery of the vehicles. Vehicles have like a three to four-month turnaround. We currently have two charging stations underground with electrical access to install two more. We're now looking for a location on the municipal campus to install four more, for a total of eight charging stations. Four of the charging stations will be for city vehicles only, and four of the charging stations will be for both city use and public use.
Okay. Okay. So, so when you say you're eligible for the grant post-purchase, we would purchase it, and it would take X amount of months before it'd get here, but in the interim, we would bill the charging stations? That's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Part of that answer is also in the driving range. You typically, how many miles driven in one day?
Yes, I'm sorry. We drive the vehicles approximately, an average of 51 miles a day. The vehicle holds a charge for, one charge takes about seven hours. And in that charge, you can get about 250 miles. So a vehicle can be charged for a week before it needs to be completely charged again.
Okay, good. No, that's, that's an excellent answer. And, that is, thank you for that. This is probably covered by warranty, but is our, is our motor pool capable of handling the electric vehicles? Or will that period of time, three to eight years, they will be under warranty, so they will just go back to a dealership? Or, I'm not sure you would answer that, or maybe the motor pool?
Yes. The three warranties mentioned will cover the cost of repair, repairs and maintenance over the course of two to three years, allowing the motor pool to become, give them time to become certified to work on electric vehicles. Right now, they are not, the employees are not certified to work on electric vehicles. But based on Edmunds, the first couple of years only require maintenance that can be done by an individual, tire check, tire rotation, windshield wiper replacement. We won't need any major repairs from the motor pool for at least two to three years. And at that time, we will be covered by warranty.
Okay. All right. Well, those are some generic questions, but I do want to thank you for doing an excellent presentation. That presentation kind of hit all the bullet points from a financial analysis standpoint. It was quite good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. You kind of, you touched on my question. It was just the placement of the charging stations, but you got on it, so.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, but a few questions, please. And I think this is to Mr. Ryan. He's still in the audience. You say two or three years for the department to be certified to handle the electric vehicles. I'd like to know, what is the approximate cost to get the department to be able to handle the electric vehicles? I remember my father always saying, he had a gas station. Every time they make a change, it costs me more money. And a lot of gas stations, I hate to say, went out of business servicing vehicles because everything went electronic, and they couldn't afford to purchase the equipment. I'm not familiar with the electric vehicles, so I guess, are you going to come back in a few years and say you need a half a million dollars to upgrade something to service these four vehicles?
To answer all of your questions is, we really haven't had time to research what the classes would cost. However, this is an investment in the future because I see the city and the nation and world adopting more electronic vehicles. We are going to have to bring on, as we replace our mechanics, they're going to naturally have EV experience. Given the three to five-year span of time, we should have sufficient training. Many of these items, like the director said, are covered under the warranty, and simply changing the wiper blades and the fluids don't really take anything. It's overcoming the initial resistance of, you know, I'm not familiar with electric. I've only done, analog is the best, or internal combustion. But either or, the city needs to get the training anyways because this is the wave of the future.
Okay. So then you don't have a problem with that, that sounds like?
I personally, if I could get a EUV for my own vehicle, I would. You know, it's better for the environment, it's better for the city, and it reduces costs. So I will wholeheartedly support the move.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, Pat touched on something, and Therese in her excellent presentation did as well. This is a learning curve for us. And the vehicles we're looking at are basic cars for a group. We're not looking at changing out our snowplow trucks. And that technology's happening. And I think initially, we're not going to have a large retooling cost in our operations. However, as the technology progresses to operate larger trucks and the heavier machinery, we could see different things. I recently had conversations with a patent attorney who's doing all the work for Cummings in Indianapolis. And the things that are going to come, the size of these trucks, it's going to, the future's happening very quickly. This is about putting, getting our toes in the water and learning. And Pat touched on it, initially, a little bit of resistance. We talked to other city administrators and other public works and fleet managers. This was just a session at the MML conference on the electrification of your fleet. And we're going through a And we're going through a large change, and this is the learning curve. Did want to comment about, I think a year and a half ago, Councilman Brightwell shared with me an article where New York was spending millions of dollars on Mustangs. And I remember, think they were $64,000 each, having a little sticker shock. The car we're buying is under $30,000. It's not outrageously priced. The Bolt has been on the market for a while. My own deputy has had one, and we've got a lot of, it's been tried and tested. I liked the way the department went about the decision, and this is a good group. Our parking enforcement, our building inspectors, they'll probably be the first entry into the electrification vehicles. I just want to also comment, our fire department has been involved in testing emergency in these new electrical vehicles. Chief Benefy was just telling me today that he and four other officers were down at the GM proving grounds in Milford, testing how we respond to emergencies and crises, how the jaws of life are used on these vehicles, what cables get cut. I've seen enough of these engines, and I know one basic thing, you don't touch the orange cable. So, this is about all of us learning, and I think this is a good portrait. And I'll remind counsel, we're moving forward on our sustainability activities. In 2010, we were part of the Energy Block Grant. We initially had electric charging stations approved as part of that application. Department of Energy came back and said, you know what? They did a 180 on agreeing to fund that because electric vehicles weren't where they are today in 2022, in 2010. We now have two charging stations. We're working with the state. Just last week, I had a conversation with a group that looking to put more charging stations throughout the city. I think Ms. Banks said it very well, the day service engines have changed so dramatically. When we went to the integration of more electronics and computers in our cars, the testing equipment, we lost a lot of service people. I think we're at another one of those points in how we travel here. I think Southfield's got to get its feet in the water.
Thank you. Ms. Banks, were you?
Yeah, no, I have a few more questions, please. Also, Ms. Beeks, you had indicated that this expense was going to come out of your budget. And in the write-up, it says the funds are available in the motor pool.
Well, no, the request is to adjust the motor pool's budget. Vehicle purchases are made through the motor pool at fleet price. So, I attempted to discuss it with Sarah Chevrolet, hoping to buy the vehicles locally, but it was determined that the purchase has to go through motor pool for fleet vehicles.
Okay, so the amount will be through the motor pool, not through your department?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the charging stations, and then I guess the last question, and maybe this would be to our administrator, with reference to the grants that are available for additional charging stations, do we know if there's going to be additional city costs? Because I'm assuming that it's not going to be 100% funded, and I have no idea. I thought when we talked last time, it was like $120,000 or $150 per charging station, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't remember the cost. I don't think it was that high, but we did receive a grant, and yes, we did have some costs. The bulk of those costs, if I recall correctly, we're getting the actual electric to the location. The reality is, on this municipal campus, we have an awful lot of stuff buried. And that's why, originally, we were outside, if you recall, we were going to be outside in the parking lot, right outside the loading dock in one area, but we ended up inside the underground parking structure because it was cheaper to bring electricity in there. So, we could find ourselves having that cost, and we'll go through the process. The grants on purchase are a little bit different, what bucket of money we can go into. And I apologize for not having more precision in our costs, but we will get that.
So, we should be financially okay to add us?
Yes.
You know, Ms. Beeks, do you know what that dollar amount could be, or no?
I do not, I'm sorry. I can look into it and get back with you.
Perhaps, Mr. McCree, I didn't realize he was behind me.
Wasn't that high?
Good evening, Council John McCree. The problem with our current DTE grants is that the grant we applied for to put the two public charging stations in are not available right now for public charging stations. They are available, but they're only available if you purchase an electronic vehicle. So, that's how we're going to qualify for the same grants. After that, it depends entirely on where we place them. If we place them in parking structure, as city administrator alluded to, the installation is not a lot of money. If we decide we'd rather put them outside, then there could be a higher cost for that. And that's really going to require an analysis between how much time our parking people spend walking to their cars and back and forth, as opposed to how much it costs to do the
You've already wired for two more stations, correct?
The stations probably won't go there. We've identified a better place to put it. We really have to balance the electric load between buildings.
Okay.
And what we've decided is it's probably better not to put any more on the PD right now. Because that's really what we're doing, is we take power from the different buildings. The most plentiful supply of power right now in the parking structure is actually the court. But the problem is then, they're walking the farthest distance to.
Okay, but the charging stations that we did get the grant for, was there a match for us, or was it 100% funded?
It covered the purchase of the charging stations. It covered five years' operation of the charging stations, the backend. But the installation, we did cover, so there's some cost for that.
So, if, John, that would be getting the conduit to the location?
Conduit, the wiring, hooking it into the boxes, sure. One of the nice things about the charging stations that we purchased and why we went with them is that these charging stations can be dual-purpose. They can be public charging stations, they can be for charging city vehicles only, or they can be, they can perform both functions. So, even if we install the four charging stations for these vehicles, we have trouble. The other ones will still be available. We simply would use a card similar to the card you use to open the doors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
John, just, this question relates to availability of, let's say, electricity. So, on our campus, what is the ideal place to place currently? What is the most ideal place to place charging stations?
That is a great question, Councilman. I've discussed this with Ms. Beeks. What it really is, is a balance. It's a balance of convenient for usage and for cost of installation. For instance, there are four parking spaces off the facility's dock which are very close to where the parking enforcement people come to work. See, the difference is, when we park and go to work, it's on our time. When they come to work and go get the cars, it's on the city's time. So, there's a difference there. We'd like to make that as convenient as possible. So, the whole question is, it's more how much it costs to install, how much the time is going to cost us for them to walk back and forth, back and forth, forever virtually. So, that's really what we're looking at. As far as electricity available, it's available at both locations that we're considering right now for all four vehicles. The court, which would be the far corner of the parking structure to the northeast, so it's the farthest part of the structure unfortunately, or the loading dock for facilities maintenance, which is pretty close to the parking enforcement office. But the problem then is, we're going to be running conduit outside for quite a distance. Our electrical contractor, who's the cheapest contractor by hour, doesn't really want to do that job because it's more than he can do on his own. So, now we're going to have to go to a larger contractor who's going to have a higher rate, so it's more work at a higher rate. So, that's really a problem. And these are Level 2 chargers, just like the two we installed.
If I may, Madam President, these are problems that will be in front of us as an organization, not just for where we charge, but we're coming to the point where charging stations will be something that we, you know, you've seen the Target parking lot, the Kroger parking lot, and yes, at City Hall and the court. And I could see a point in our future where we have a bank near the library, and we'd probably be charging that to the library fund balance. A bank on this side for City Hall and one near the police department. And as we go through our facility needs assessment, at minimum, putting that conduit in place so that we can more cost-effectively run the cabling. And then there will be, you know, capacity issues and the overall sizing of what's available on this campus. So, but we are going to be facing these problems like the rest of the country, and this is why the feds are pumping this issue.
Right. And just one other, and obviously, our fleet, I'm not sure you guys looked at projection, but let's say 10 years down the road, our fleet would be, what, 95% EV maybe? Have you even thought about that? 10 years down the road?
I think it's difficult for anyone to predict what we'll be driving in 10 years with certainty. My guess is that most of our vehicles will be electric, but that's my guess, probably as good as your guess.
Okay. And one thing I read the other day, and this is just a sideline, that people always talk about the capacity, the mileage capacity of the EVs. And they say, you know, 200 to 300 miles per charge. But then they say, how many times a month do you go 300 miles from your point of origin? So, that whole thing is something to be worked into, the whole maintenance of our EV fleet. And I think Ms. Beeks indicated that, you know, they were charging, and I was concerned about how you rotate the charging, but when you get up in the morning, that vehicle is only going, what, 18 miles within the city of Southfield? So, I don't know, you guys can do a flow chart and say, fleet vehicle number one is due for a charge, and vehicle number two is due for a charge, or something of that nature, but that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, counsel. Did you want to comment?
No.
No, okay, good. Seeing no other comments, are we ready to vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the purchase of the electric vehicles for parking enforcement.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the authorization to purchase electric vehicles for the parking enforcement as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, we're under the counsel portion now. I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I just want to remind everyone that next Tuesday is Election Day, and please remember to get out and vote. And if you can't make it to the polls, please remember to get an absentee ballot in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, especially my two children who are sitting in the audience, Emma and Zachary. They've been patiently waiting through this meeting. They get to see how things work behind the scenes, but this is the upfront version. I think she may want to say hello, if that's okay with you.
Hello, my name is Emma. We hope you have a great rest of your week.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Zachary. I was really hoping everybody would enjoy a brand-new month and the rest of the year. Thank you. Bye.
Well, thank you both. Councilman Brightwell?
November 10th is Veterans Day, and we have two ceremonies that I'd like to highlight. The city of Southfield will have their Veterans Day ceremony here in the council chamber on November 10th from 11:00, starting at 11:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. The county executive is also having Veterans Day. They will be honoring veterans on November 10th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Oakland County Executive Office Building in Pontiac, I'm sorry, in Waterford, on a Pontiac Lake Road. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. And I'll just echo what Councilwoman Banks said about, please go out to vote next Tuesday or earlier if you're voting absentee. We just want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard in this very, very important election. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no comments tonight. Mayor?
I wanted to speak on the deer issue, which I did earlier, and Sherazetik on Saturday the 12th is also having a veterans program. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Madam President, I just want to thank the police and fire and parks and rec. We had a lot of very exciting Halloween activities. Police and fire departments made a lot of contacts with the young, with our children in the community, and just a great opportunity to build that relationship. And the Boobash was very successful as well this weekend.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Council Mayor. I actually have two things to present tonight. The first one is the proposed Ice Chest Moratorium. The zoning ordinance was amended in 2018. It had been brought before city council. There were some retail gas stations that, they weren't in compliance. There were issues because they were blocking the ADA ramps and barriers. There was a lot of discussion back then, and now we are at a point that we are discussing it again. So, Planner Code isn't here this evening, but I have been in conversation with him. He's been in conversation with code enforcement. So, we're requesting this honorable body a 100-day moratorium for us to do some more research and study and look at potential amendments to the ordinance. So, as of today, we're, I don't know the exact day, but 180 days from November 1st.
Counsel? I have a motion to accept the resolution for the moratorium for 180 days?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd move the resolution for the proposed Ice Chest Moratorium for 180 days as presented by our city attorney?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the resolution for the moratorium on the proposed Ice Chest for 180 days as presented by our city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more housekeeping item. This is in regards to the birth and death records that are issued by our city clerk's office. I want to first mention before I discuss what I presented a resolution is that on our city website, I did notice it says the city clerk's office also serves as the local registrar. While that is good that it says that, right now, under the Public Health Code, there were some options as we go through the process of appointing a city clerk and all the things that will come in the near future, but we wanted to make sure that we continue the duties of issuing those birth and death certificates. So, I have presented a resolution, and it references the Public Health Code. It references that city clerks in the city with a population of 40,000 or more are responsible, excuse me, for recording and transmitting birth and death certificates, commonly known as vital records, whereas the Public Act 368 of 1978 of Michigan Public Health Code defines a local registrar as the county clerk or the clerk's deputy, or in the case of a city having a population of 40,000 or more, the city clerk or city department designated by the governing body of the city. Whereas under the public, Michigan Public Health Code, a local registrar's duties include recording and transmitting vital records and issuing certified copies of vital records documents on file, whereas the city of Southfield has a population of 40,000 or more, and due to the importance of issuing vital records, it is respectfully recommended that the Southfield City Clerk's Office, City Department be designated as the local registrar. And again, because our website does state that we are already the local registrar, we wanted to have a reservation. we wanted to have a resolution in place because the Department of Vital Records has contacted the city and would like to see our deputy clerk be the person that temporarily signs those. So, uh, after doing the research in my office, we felt that this would be the best option because it's the city clerk office, and we have staff in there, so it is listed also as a department, and we thought that this would be the best option right now to, uh, continue to get the records to the public as we did in the past.
Okay. Are there any questions?
All right. Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I move that the Southfield City Council hereby designates the city clerk's office as a local registrar pursuant to Public Act 368 of 1978 of the Michigan Public Health Code.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the resolution that was presented before us for, uh, the Southfield City Clerk's Office to be our local registrar pursuant to the Public Act 368 of 1978. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Hi. Hi, yes, I just want to give a couple of reminders for our residents. This Friday is the last day the city clerk's office can mail out any absentee ballots. So, if you have not received your ballot and you wanted an absentee ballot, please, if you need it mailed out Friday, according to the state law, is the last day we can mail out ballots. We will also be open this Saturday regarding absentee voting from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The city clerk's office will be open. We have voting booths in the pavilion available for anyone who wants to actually vote here on Saturday, and we will have our ballot box available. On Monday, the, we can take absentee ballots, they have to be voted here at City Hall up until 4:00 p.m. After 4:00 p.m., we will not be able to take any more absentee ballots until Tuesday, Tuesday. And Election Day is November 8th. Please come out and vote, and if you have any questions, do not hesitate to contact the city clerk's office at 248-796-5150. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Okay. There's nothing to schedule, and I don't see anyone else in the audience, okay? Uh, Council, we have a request for a closed session for the discussion of a performance evaluation. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, I'd like to accept a, uh...
Madam, uh, go ahead. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go into a closed session for the, um, discussion of a performance evaluation.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to go into closed session for the discussion of performance evaluation. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Banks?
Yes.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilman Brilis Assett? Councilman Frank Burris Assett? Councilman Hoskins?
Yes.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. We have both wanted to go into closed session.
Thank you. We will now go into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight.